Everyone, welcome to the Town of Vernon Town Council Meeting for February 7th, 2023. If you want an agenda, there's one sitting over there next to the booth there. And we're live on cable TV once for in a long time, so that's great. If you can please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance, that would be wonderful.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen?
Sorry. Councilmember Bush.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Clay.
Here.
Gesse.
Here.
Latander.
Here.
Leveque.
Here.
Matola.
Here.
Nevis Matias. Absent. O'Connell.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Tedford.
Here.
And Wendy's.
Here.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The mayor is not here tonight. He said something about golfing in the Carolina Center. So we'll have just Mr. Picaro will have a little introduction first, please.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's a pleasure for me to introduce Katie McCray, if she wants to come on up to the desk up here with Fire Marshal Dan Wazaluski and our Fire Administrator and Chief Epler as well. Katie McCray of South Windsor began work yesterday as our new and first ever Chief Medical Officer, replacing Jean Gothier in her role as our EMS supervisor. In her new position, she is overseeing the town's Emergency Medical Services Division under the Vernon Fire Department. Katie has an extensive experience in the emergency medical field as a frontline EMT and paramedic, as a leader, and as a trainer. She began her work as an EMT for American Medical Response in 2012 and earned her paramedic certification in 2016. Since 2020, Katie has worked as a paramedic field training officer for AMR and in that role has assisted, trained, and supervised numerous EMTs and paramedics. Katie is also certified in Critical Incident Stress Management and has helped to establish a Critical Incident Stress Management Team to assist fellow EMTs and other first responders. So that's the short version. She can tell you more about herself, but I can tell you today is day two and as we know, she has big shoes to fill, but I will tell you she came with her running shoes on. She made it through HR orientation yesterday and then immediately went under Dan Wazaluski's wing and the chief's wing and has been soaking in a lot of information. We've been throwing a lot at her and she's still smiling and taking it all in. Last night, she attended the Vernon Fire Department Officers Meeting, Monthly Meeting, and today she sat through, was it two hours of budget meetings with us? So, and she's still smiling, so that's a, that's a good sign. So with that, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we'll turn it back over to you and if you wanted her to say a couple remarks, it's.
Yeah, sure, please. Tell us, tell us a little bit about yourself, more than the sterilized version Mr. Picaro gave us.
Yeah, so those are most of the bullet points. I'm very excited to be joining the fantastic team over at Vernon Fire and EMS. I've had the pleasure of working with many of them over the years in multiple capacities with my previous employment and they've all been phenomenal, so I'm happy to be able to help lead that team towards a bright future and go in there.
Thank you very much. We appreciate, thank you for coming here and hope you enjoy your term of employment. You're working with a great team too. Those gentlemen and Mr. Picaro and Dawn, of course, and HR, just very good, so enjoy yourself. And if you have any questions or something, you know, besides administration, if you don't like their answers, you can come to us because we like the metal in all their stuff that they do. Make their life miserable, you know? So, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, did you, did you guys want to say anything? I don't know if you have anything. Mr. Wazaluski, sorry.
It's all right, if I could quickly, after two rounds of interviews, I was thrilled to see Katie's name come across our desks as a candidate for the job. She brings a wealth of knowledge. I like her youthful spirit and again, having been through two night meetings now and still comes back and still smiling, sitting with finance today and going through her first budget meeting, if they had done that to me, I would have ran for the door. So I look forward to working with her and I, I think she's going to do a fantastic job here with our Vernon family.
No, I concur. I believe Katie's an excellent addition to the team that we have with the, on the EMS side of fire and EMS and look forward to working with her and all the great things that she has a potential to bring to the organization.
Mr. Picaro, is there anything else, other announcements we have?
No, sir.
Okay. So now we open up the Citizens Forum. Anybody for Citizens Forum? Yes, young man over there.
How y'all doing today? My name is Janero, under the straw man.
You have to give your full name and address, please.
I'm gonna give him your full name, I'm gonna give them to them, even though I don't have to now, I know law now. I reside in Vernon, Connecticut, on West Main Street, under the UCC 308, but somebody got to live somewhere. My name's Janero Gonzalez, so today I'm gonna come and speak real to y'all. My wife, and I look at it like this, my wife as being white, tells me today that the council, the town council looks at me and they laugh at you when you come up there and talk. So when I look at her and I judge that scenario, what she told me, it really made me think a lot because she's like, what the heck, what did they do for you? What have they done for your people since you've been talking up there? And I sit down, I say, you're right, they haven't done nothing. She says, so why do you vote for these people when these people don't even show you respect? They just want votes so they can get on, so they can get in power on positions, so they can get that pay, but they care less. And it's funny, because when she told me that, I went back into the Uniform Commercial Code. And then the Uniform Commercial Code, which is the Connecticut General Statute, follows under. So they follow under maritime law, which maritime law is the waters of the seas because it's under commerce. You understand this? This is the difference. So you have two type of laws. You have equity law, equity law is common law, which comes from the king, that established it under Christianity law, which this is why the UCC is not a real law. It was off Article One, Section Three, it was opened up to open up as a corporation, which this corporation's name is called the District of Columbia. The birth certificates are a surety bond to all these individuals in England and every birth certificate is owned by the Queen. The United States itself is just a corporation by the UCC and it clearly states it as clear eye view. Do not surrender your Fourth Amendment to no official because they don't have jurisdiction at all. If you make contract with the state or the federal agencies, then you become under their jurisdiction. Got to be careful with words and which words are being played with because words will trick you and they will trick you. One word might mind being something, but they're really using it in a different way to try to take status from you, which that's what they did to me at the courthouse. They took status from me and they took my jurisdiction. Okay? Just like the judge, Ms. Murphy, when I told her about the code, it states right on common law that she has to abide by it. It states it right in the UCC that she has to listen to it. She still denies me. But under common law, she can be sued as a judge, even though they're protected. See, but common law overrides everything. It's just like Islam. You have the Sunnah, the Prophet, you have the Quran. It goes first, Quran, then the Prophet, then the prophets and messengers. Okay? There's a difference between a prophet and a messenger, big, big difference. A prophet was spoken by angel. A messenger is an individual that picks that prophet's book and delivers it to the people. That's the difference. Okay? So when we come and we try to be honest with the people that are incorporated, because you make money from me, it's crazy how much money they make, especially in court, and there's contracts to prove that. But I'm really upset because I'm the one who told the civil court to call the state police so they could justify that situation. But we have to be honest with our people. I'm not scared of nobody. I know my kids, I know my kids can die, I know they can get kidnapped, I know they can get sniped, I know the game, I'm from the block. I know the CIA and all these secret societies could do what they could do. So what? When the sleeping giant wakes up, the question is, are y'all going to be held responsible for it? People laugh. But when you're off uniform, remember, you always got to go to Stop and Shop and go eat. You always got to go buy something, you know? There's people that are becoming very educated like me and we're waking up, we're not liking it, but we have to abide by it because if we don't follow the UCC, we don't get to eat. If we're not a corporation, we don't get to eat. And what I mean by a corporation, if you look at every paperwork that you get, state paperwork or federal paperwork, all your name would be all in capital letters. That's not a proper noun, is it? Proper noun is the first letter is capital and the rest is small caps, that's a proper noun. That's how you know it's a corporation name. And I'm not telling you, just look it up at the UCC. If we're gonna vote for y'all, let's make sure y'all help us. If not, I'll learn how to run for office here and I'll make sure that I knock at every door and I'll run, as much as I don't want to be part of this jurisdiction, I'll do it just because I want to help my people. Okay? And I'm not racist, prejudiced, I love white people. I grew up with them all my life, I ate deer with them, snake with them, squirrels with them, stuff I have never thought of in my life, okay? But when the law states different, man, we got to get taught. Okay? Please, open up certain things around her for people to learn. I know that certain societies don't want people like me to learn this type of stuff, but I'll get you on the next meeting though.
Okay.
Okay? I'm at home, always home, never nowhere.
All right, thanks, Janero.
Thank you. Mayor.
Anybody else? All right, well, we'll close Citizens Forum. Oh, I'm sorry. Rogers?
Through you, Mayor. Terry Rogers, 26 White Street, Vernon, Connecticut, also a town council member. So I just had a couple of questions on the EID, the Energy Improvement District Board. I had received some information on like how to switch suppliers and, you know, different rates. So how does the Town of Vernon get that information out into the community on the different programs that might exist, or do we just refer them to social services? And then I wanted to know the cultural district, how we're doing on the cultural district, where we stand, since we were, we did get an approval, I believe, on May 30th for the 700, no, I'm sorry, that's the Sustainable CT. So we did the health impact assessment. So where do we stand with the health impact assessment and then with Sustainable CT, where we just received our silver level with the 770 points? Where do we stand with that and the programs that we're putting to place and then where are we going towards the gold status for Sustainable CT? Thank you.
So let me, let me, I'll answer that, Mr. Picaro.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So first, the EIDB, we work very closely, I work very closely with them, and we're actually in the process of launching another program like we did for Solarize Vernon called Empower Vernon. And we're trying to, it's been about a year in the making, working whatever source and a couple of local, they call it energy assessments for your home, and we're trying to work out a deal to get discounted rates for Vernon residents to participate in the program so we can help our residents save some money on their utility bills, which, as everybody knows, are going up. So that's in the process and that also feeds into Sustainable Connecticut and maintaining our certification. The information for those individuals who have difficulty paying their bills, we strongly encourage residents to reach out, like as you, as you mentioned, to our Social Services Department. We have programs in place through the state of Connecticut, through the Town of Vernon, and from private sources where we can help people who are having difficulty paying for their utility bills. They have, you know, there's eligibility requirements that they'd have to meet, but they're, but those programs are there for a reason and they're, they're to help people in need, so we strongly encourage people to, to reach out to our Social Services Department for that. As far as the Sustainable Connecticut Certification, the silver certification was the highest level that we could achieve. There's, there's no level higher. They're talking about coming out to a gold or platinum level at some point, but silver was the highest when we applied. We're keeping a close eye on it because we want to make sure we stay on the cutting edge with that. But the cultural district was part of it and through the deputy mayor, Jennifer Johnson of our library is the lead on that, and so we could submit an update as you requested, either before the next meeting or as part of the next council meeting, as the mayor chooses.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Anybody else? Comments?
Sorry, this isn't really kind of like important, but our laptops, I feel like they need a booster chair to be able to.
I agree, yes.
To be able to see, so I don't know if this was in the budget to get these.
Bringing my saws all next week, right now.
So I don't know if we can maybe make them a little smaller or I just need a booster chair.
I concur. It would be interesting if we could lower them or. You, you replace these because you teach classes here, is that what? Mr. Picaro?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So our office was able to get, and the IT department, a phenomenal deal on these new monitors, so they're a little bit easier to read, they're bigger, because we did receive some concerns from individuals saying the text was too small on the smaller monitors, so kind of damned if we do, damned if we don't. But we could certainly, we can certainly figure out maybe a way to raise the chairs and, and that'll allow you to maybe see over the monitors, but hopefully it's easier to read for, for most folks.
I say I do like to see the eyes of who I'm talking to. I guess. Thank you.
Right there with you, Mike.
The one young kid isn't here, you know, so you. All right. So we'll, anybody else? Anything else? Okay, then we're going, we'll do executive session at the end as we normally do and we'll go on to the agenda. Ms. Bush?
I move to, for the consent agenda.
And I'd like to pull number one, please.
Okay.
On the consent.
Anybody pulling?
Pulling anything else?
Excuse me? Who seconded that motion, please? Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anybody pulling anything else? Okay? All in favor of the consent agenda minus item number one? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? So that's 11, oh, Karen, no opposition, no abstentions. All right, item number one, please, Ms. Bush.
The Town Council hereby approves three refunds from the prior year totaling $1,120.3 and 16 current year totaling $8,076.13 as outlined in the memorandum from Terry Jarni, Collector of Revenue, to Michael Jake Picaro, Town Administrator, dated January 27th, 2023. Second.
So Ms. Bush made the motion.
Jim.
I guess, yeah. Mary Ann, whoa, mama, Mary Ann seconded the motion. Any discussion? No? All right, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand, aye. Any opposed? No? And I am abstaining. So it's 10 in the affirmative, zero opposed, and Matola abstaining, please. All right, Karen? All right, excellent, thank you. Ms. Bush, number one, a new business.
The Town Council hereby authorizes the Vernon Fire Department to apply for and receive the Federal Emergency Management Agency Assistance for Firefighters Grant for 2022, and further, the Town Council authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to execute any and all documents for same.
Second. I heard Mr. O'Connell first, he seconded. All right. Yes, the, yes, the dynamic duo is back here. All right.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. If I can draw the council's attention to memo that was left, an updated memo on this from your council packet, there's only one change, we wanted to draw that to your attention. The dollar amount in the original memo was $43,472. When we redid the quotes, that was based on an older quote, the most up-to-date quote, because everything's going up in cost, literally sometimes day by day, is $44,966. So we wanted to bring that to your attention with the 10% match also adjusted to $4,496.60. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments, anything? Or are these, no? Oh, through myself, I get, oh, go ahead, Ms. Bush.
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment that this money will really help support our firefighters and I'm very pleased to support this. So thank you and thank you for all your hard work.
Anybody else? Gentlemen, well, I have, I have a few questions. Our match is coming from what funding?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you. This would come out of a recurring cost that we have for other firefighting equipment, which is where it was earmarked. We applied for this, this grant as well last year and we were unsuccessful. Working with finance, we do, we would have the money going forward in the budget under other firefighting equipment for the 10% match.
Okay, good. Just wanted to be clear on that. And what are, you're getting six fast rescue solution boards, what are those? Please.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So the fast rescue board, it's a extrication device that you could rapidly load a firefighter onto and drag them out of a hazardous, dangerous location where they may have become trapped and tangled. The other feature of that fast board is it has a flotation kit that goes on it, now becomes a ice and water rescue device, adding to our complement of water rescue equipment.
Excellent. Do we have any of that now?
We do not have a device, device that acts like that now, no.
Okay, good. So that's in addition. One for, how do you distribute it? On which kind of trucks or?
We're looking at putting these on our rescue vehicles as well as our aerials because those are specialized apparatus that also, the members there are specifically trained for RIT activity.
Okay, good. Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Clay?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you. Good evening. On the four first generation breathing apparatuses, do we use more than, do we have more than that that we have? And you just replace them?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The RIT pack itself is utilized, it's basically, it's a bottle with a regulator, a spare mask, and that would go in with the RIT team. If a firefighter became down, entangled, injured inside the building in a environment that is immediate danger to life and health, you're relying on that air pack on his back to provide air. This pack is supplemental air. It'll come in, we can connect to that firefighter who's down, they now have more air to breathe while we disentangle them, get them packaged and get them out. If they have a mask failure, this kit also has a mask, we could replace the mask they're wearing. This device also has what's known as a universal adapter, so if we are, have mutual aid neighbors in assisting us, one of their firefighters goes down in the building and gets trapped with a different brand of air pack, all of the air packs now manned by the various manufacturers have a way to connect to this RIT pack so that we can give them supplemental air so they can continue to breathe normally on their air pack while we disentangle and get them out of entrapment and get them rescued.
Excellent. So do we only have four and four of these, the, oh, it's RIT, do we only?
Currently, we only have four of the RIT packs. They're the original first generation RIT packs. The Fire Department was very adamant in the early days when they first came out to make sure that we had them to protect our firefighters. They are probably close to 20 years old now. They're, by, by name, they're in the third generation now. They've outlasted their, their lifespan. Fortunately, we have not had to use them other than in training, but again, it's, it's an insurance policy to make sure that we can do everything we can if a firefighter's in a dangerous situation, be able to get them out.
Right, so four is enough?
Four is enough, yes.
Okay. And then my other question, I was a little confused, your rescue solution boards that the deputy mayor mentioned, why is that faster than a, you know, what's the difference between a normal board?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, fast, fast board is the brand name.
Oh, okay.
Okay? They're, they're a rapid extrication device, rapid meaning you can get somebody on it, strapped in quickly and get pulled out of the situation quickly. Fast board is just the, the corporate name for the brand that we're looking at.
But all boards are the same?
All boards are designed to be the same thing.
Okay.
They're different in terms of how they're used, how you attach somebody to it and what it's got for handles and grips to pull somebody out with.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Anybody else? Ms. Rogers?
Hi. So you said that you applied last year and didn't get it?
That's correct.
Okay, so what, what's different from the application form from then to now, or is it the same to ensure that we get the grant?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we have updated the language in this grant. We had changed a few things around and we always say with a fresh set of eyes looking at it, we're working with Nicole Greco from Mr. Picaro's office, who does a lot of the grant writing for us now. So with her fresh set of eyes and hopefully mine and some tweaks that the chief made, we're hoping that we have a better chance. FEMA receives over 8,000 requests for this funds throughout the year. We're asking for something, what's called a micro grant, which is under $50,000. We're also hoping that by asking for that smaller amount, that we're in contention this year.
Thank you.
Through the deputy mayor, and just to add to that as well, you know, anytime there's a grant, we're going to go for it, you know, and I think Dan did a great job at explaining it. It's extraordinarily competitive. We have gotten it in the past. In fact, I wrote, wrote the grant, I think 16 years ago when we hit the big one, but they look at that and they, you know, they're, it's unusual for departments to get the grant back-to-back years and it's not unusual for us to, you know, be in that pattern where it might take several years for us to hit it again, but we have to keep on applying, we have to keep on demonstrating need. We're going to continue to budget for what we feel is in the best interest of the town, the firefighters, and if we can get the grant, then we'll cross that bridge and offset that in the budget later on, so. But we're going to keep on, keep on trying to go for this one and every other one that comes out as well through FEMA.
Cool, good luck.
Good. Anybody else? So are any of these in any kind of capital budget?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. One of the rules and stipulations of the AFG grant process is you cannot have some item that's in a capital budget also applied to for a grant.
Okay.
So no, they're not in a capital budget.
And do, I know you said we had the RIT, and to follow up on Ms. Clay's question, because I was going to make a joke and say, oh, our board's slow now? Do we have that kind of rescue device?
We have, on each rescue truck, we have a similar device that is not as firefighter-friendly. Takes a little bit of work and primarily the device we have is used for confined space extrication.
So when will you know about this grant?
About this time next year.
Oh, so we're, it's a quite a big process.
It is quite a process. The denials for the following, or excuse me, the previous year came out, I think, three weeks ago.
Through you, Mr., to you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So they have multiple rounds of awards and literally you could wait a year, we could be in round 20 of an award, you know, and it could take up to a year for us to find out, hopefully sooner.
So keep it surprised of the status on this one, please. I would appreciate it.
We will. The, the grant will be submitted by Friday, which is the deadline. As of today, we were almost through with it, so it should be ready to go, hopefully within the next day with Mr. Picaro's approval.
Good, all right, good luck.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? No? All right. All in favor of the motion? Raise your hands, aye. Any opposed? I see no opposed. Any abstentions? No abstentions, motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming tonight. Ms. Bush, number two.
Resolve the Vernon Town Council hereby appoints the firm of Mahoney Sobel and Company of 180 Glastonbury Boulevard, Glastonbury, Connecticut, as auditors to audit the books and accounts of the Town of Vernon for the physical year ending June 2023. for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, and to authorize the town administrator to execute the contract 2007 in the amount of $83,300 for the fiscal year 2023 audit.
Mr. Tedford seconds it. And I believe we have Mr. O'Neill here to make the comment.
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So this is the annual request per the charter of the town council to approve the auditor, appoint the auditor for our fiscal year ending 2023. As mentioned on here, this is the last year of a three-year extension that we granted back in 2021. To date, we've had no issues with this company. We've had a good working relationship. They've done quite a fair amount of work to date. We, we still have yet to complete the 2022 audit. We should complete that by the end of this month. But again, we have no ongoing concerns with the, the company. Everything's been going well.
Anyone have any questions? Ms. Clay?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Mr. O'Neill, have they given you any indication after this contract where they're headed with fees and everything?
Through the deputy mayor, no, they have not. We have not had any conversations with them regarding... Because if you remember, when we put this extension in place, we said we would go out to RFP. So our whole, we would go out to our RFP. So our hope is, once we get through the budget prep and, and budget deliberations, we will put that RFP together and we'll go out to the market to see what, what responses we get.
When do you do that? When, when do you do the RFP? Is it after the year or prior to the expiration?
There, there's no set time, through, through the deputy mayor, there's no set timeframe on that. But like I said, we're gonna try to get through the budget this year and then we'll put that together and put it out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? There's not a lot of competition out there if we put an RFP out?
I, I do have some concerns on that, yes. I think that the, the overall market for auditing of municipalities has shrunk.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Anybody else? Any questions? Any other comments, Mr. O'Neill?
No, that's all.
All right.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion? Aye. Any opposed? I see no opposed. Any abstentions? No abstentions. Motion passes. Any affirmative? Sure, we'll take a five-minute recess for something. All right, we, where do we leave off? Oh, Mr. O'Neill. Mr. O'Neill, any other comments on...
No, I think we're done with that one. I was just sitting here for the next one if there's any questions.
All right, so do, where do we, oh, we voted on that one, right, Diane? Right, yeah, okay. Excellent. All right, Ms. Bush, number three?
Number three. Resolved, the Vernon Town Council graciously accepts the donations received from the Lyle, from Lyle and Grossman family for the ambulance fund totaling $115.
Second by Mr. Tedford. Any discussion? We have our two guests here. No, nothing. Any questions? Do you know why we received this?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We, on occasion, receive donation-type checks from individuals that we've provided service to and they're grateful for the service that they got and want to send a donation.
I'm sure we can put it to good use. It does, the check says 15 and the motion says 115. Oh, two checks, yes, okay, never mind. Sorry. Ms. Gesay?
Yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would just like to comment that I absolutely know that the council and the town appreciates their appreciation. So we're very grateful. Thank you.
No, we do, that's true, yes. Anybody else? All in, all in favor? Raise your hands, aye. Any opposed? I don't see any opposed, none of, any abstentions? No abstentions. Thank you very much. Ms. Bush, number four, please.
Yes. The town council hereby schedules the following budget meeting dates for the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget deliberations. Monday, March 20th, 2023, Thursday, March 23rd, 2023, Monday, March 27th, 2023, Thursday, March 30th, 2023, and Monday, April 3rd, 2023, with a start time of 7:00 PM, and Saturday, March 18th, 2023, with a start time of 9:00 PM. Public hearings will be held, will be Saturday, March 18th, 2023, with a start time of 9:05 AM, and Thursday, March 30th, 2023, with a start time of 7:05 PM. To hear comment and answer questions relative to the 2023-2024 Town of Vernon budget, all budget meetings and public hearings will be held in the Town Council Chambers, third floor, Town Hall, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut.
Second by Mary Ann, Ms. Levesque. Any discussion, questions on the date? Ms. Rogers?
It was read as Saturday, March 18th, 2023, with a start time of 9:00 PM. It's a start time of 9:00 AM.
Did I say PM? I apologize. Thank you.
That's 9:00 AM. Anybody else? Questions on the dates? Concerns? Speak now while Mr. O'Neill is here and can rearrange his schedule. Nobody? Don't drink on St. Fatty's Day, that's everything. Oh my heavens. We'll, we'll, we'll speak softly that day, just in case. All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I see no opposed. Any abstentions? No abstentions, 11 to nothing. No opposition, no abstentions. The motion passes. Number two? Oh, is that what it was? Yes. Don't go, we got motion number two.
All right, pursuant to the chap, to the charter, Chapter 4, Annual Town Meeting, the town council hereby schedules Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, as the annual town meeting and final public hearing to hear comments and answer questions relative to the fiscal year 2023-2024 Town of Vernon budget. The April 25th, 2023 public hearing and the annual town meeting will be held at the Rockville High School Auditorium, Loveland Hill Road, Vernon, Connecticut, beginning at 7:00 PM.
I heard Mr. Tedford first and a second. Any discussion on the annual public meeting, like any town meeting? Anybody? No questions, concerns? Mr. O'Neill, any comments? All right, all in favor? Aye. All, any opposed? I see no opposed. Any abstentions? No abstentions, passes 11 to nothing. Now, Mr. O'Neill, thank you very much. Let's do the minutes first before we go into executive session, please.
I've moved to accept the minutes as presented.
Second by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion, corrections, omissions, deletions? Anything on the minutes? No one? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I see no opposed. Any abstentions? No abstentions, the motion passes in the affirmative. 11 to nothing. Ms. Bush?
The town council pursuant to the authority given in Connecticut General Statutes 1-206D hereby move to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations and invites Michael Jake Picaro, Town Administrator, and Don Maslow, Assistant Town Administrator, to attend.
Second by Mary Ann, Ms. Levesque. Any discussion on it before we go in? We're gonna go in, all right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Any abstentions? No abstentions, the motion passes 11 to nothing in the affirmative. We'll go into the office. Hello, 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 we're back from executive session. When it gets down, Ms. Bush will read a motion when they get back here.
The town council hereby approves the legal representation of attorney Ryan O'Donnell with the law firm Pullman &amp; Comley LLC for the town of Vernon as presented and further authorize Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to sign any and all documents for same.
Second.
I think I heard Mary Ann first and a second. Any discussion, questions, concerns? None. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Any abstentions? No abstentions, all right. The motion passes in the affirmative.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, I heard Ms. Clay, her second. Seconded by Ms. Clay. All in favor, non-divestable, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No one wants to stay longer, I guess. No opposition, any abstentions? No abstentions, we're adjourned.